Well, just no objections. We have a quorum by the presence of the president of the council. This is, and there's no objections. Is Focus Springfield ready for us to begin? Okay. Well, there's no objections. I'm going to get the meeting started, ladies and gentlemen. I am Melvin. Keep track of any, trying to get in, and I would appreciate it if Focus Springfield in doing this process. Thank you, everyone, for being with us today. The purpose of this meeting is to establish procedures for a vote to fill the vacancy of our former on the council, Adam Gomez, Senator Gomez now. We will hopefully be able to have these come to some conclusion as to the rules on how this will occur. So for, I have one person waiting. Hold on. So at this point, I'm going to defer to the president of council, Councilor Marcus Williams, for an explanation of the procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And first, before I dive into the procedure, I just wanted to to mention just that I felt it appropriate to have a subcommittee meeting prior to the actual election, which, of course, we're still working out the date for next week. But to use this time to to review the procedure, to offer any feedback for the procedure prior to the election next week, so that we can actually focus on the election taking place and kind of get get out of the weeds with the actual procedure this this evening. So I just wanted to thank Counselor Edwards for for calling this meeting for that purpose. And if it's easier to share my screen with you, I will do that. Give me one second. And you can please all just tell me when you see that.
I believe, I believe everybody can see it.
Okay, all right, great. So first, I just pretty much extracted this first portion from the email that I speculated a couple of weeks ago, stating those who had submitted letters of interest and resumes for the vacant Ward One City Council seat. And as mentioned, all candidates who submitted materials met the eligibility requirement issued by the commissioner and had been vetted by her office. I also believe she's on the call this evening as well. So let's dive right in, if we if we will, and just to give you some context. This is the director's cut version of the procedure where I'm also including my notes as president in my direction for complete transparency, considering that this is the first time we use that process as such. And hopefully, we all know, you know, there might be things in the pipeline coming down, which prescribes the way to go about holding such an election if there is a vacancy. Until that takes place, hopefully, this can serve for other future presidents in the meantime as well, if that should too happen during tenure. So we'll jump right in. So the first item would be a procedural vote. I'll read it direct as it's stated here. Under Roberts rules, the process of nominating and electing officers, where there is no procedure for nominating or electing candidates, a member of the assembly can make the motion explaining the procedure to follow. So at that time, of course, I would ask for a counselor to explain the procedure. And Counselor Edwards has very graciously accepted that since he is chairing this meeting. And then, of course, we would go about it the same way with other agenda items, where someone would motion for the vote to accept the proposed procedure, as I will explain it, second it. And then we will take a roll call. So that would be the first item as a part of this election process. And then we would move to agenda item number two. Here, candidates will have the floor, of course, by way of Zoom. And I am putting in parentheses here to be drawn at random. So this is when I would ask Madam Clerk, in the order that the name of the candidates appear in the list above that you all saw, can you please pick numbers one through five from the box to assign numbers to each candidate? Pretty simple, right? Madam Clerk, then I would ask her to, can you now pick numbers one through five from the box to determine the speaking order? So when you have folks, of course, coming before us stating their credentials and all of that, I just don't want to get into the weeds of, oh, why does this person get to go first? Why does this person get to go? So it's, I thought it was very appropriate just to have us draw the speaking order from a box. Each candidate will be provided a period of up to five minutes to explain why they are willing to serve and why they would be the best candidate for the job. I will ask those same two questions of each candidate prior to speaking. After that, after each candidate had the opportunity to speak, counselors will have a period of up to 15 minutes for a question-answer period. So as you can see, I've outlined that here, where I'll just give you the first example. I would say whoever the candidate is, please state your name and address for the record. Can you please explain why you're willing to serve, why you would be the best candidate to fill the vacancy? Then they would be able to speak for up to five minutes. It would come back to me, where I would entertain questions from counselors to the candidate directly, also known as a question-answer period. And then lastly, and this is an important point, per Roberts rule of orders, seeing no more questions or the time is up, whatever comes first, will you consent to being nominated this evening? So after I get that response, we will, we can move into the second person based on the drawing. And we would do that for all five candidates. So hopefully, my thought is, this this portion should take no longer than an hour to complete. Where all candidates will have an opportunity to speak, counselors will have an opportunity to ask questions, and we can move on into the council deliberation. Of course, it's very kind of stated plan as day. At this time, I will entertain deliberation amongst the council, where the counselors will have the opportunity to share thoughts on the candidates, maybe share what they might deem important and considering the next Ward One Counselor, anything of that nature, but that that portion of the agenda will be reserved exclusively for counselors to engage in discussion amongst themselves outside of the candidates. So then, after that, we would take nominations from the floor. Well, just follow me here. At this time, I'll be saying, at this time, I would request that any member of the council offer a nomination to fill the Ward One vacancy of the Springfield City Council. As a reminder for counselors, a nomination does not need a second. A member can't nominate more than one person for the office until everyone has had the opportunity to make a nomination. And nominees do not have to leave the room for nominations when the vote is taken or when the vote is counted, as this is a public meeting. I really felt important, I'll just add a caveat here, that because this is the first time we are engaging in such a type of process that we are creating together, I felt it important that everything is public. You know, I, yeah, and I feel that, you know, there's been some question, oh, should we take votes and, you know, executive? No, let's all keep it out on the open floor, so there's no question as to what's being taking place. So, of course, you know, the council, a council would then make a nomination for candidate X, whatever. I would then recognize candidate X saying they have been nominated and then asking for any further nominations. So that process would ensue until all folks who are going to be nominated will be nominated. We have five people looking for this vacancy. It's very possible that not all of them are nominated. It's possible that they all are, depending on the council, of course. So I would conclude this section by asking, are there any more nominations three separate times to for surety? And then seeing none, I would close the period for nominations. The next piece here is election by roll call vote. This piece will also be drawn at random based on nominations called. So what I was really trying to avoid here is, let's just say, candidate X gets selected first, or I guess, I'm sorry, gets nominated first by a counselor. I thought it was, it might not be fair, because it would be a race to nominate someone first. We should really have another drawing to determine the election order of those who are nominated. So that, again, there's not a question of, well, you know, I didn't raise my hand fast enough in the queue on Zoom. You didn't see me to make the nomination. So it really just avoids that disturbance. So the nominees will be voted for one at a time. The first nominee to get a majority vote of the body is elected. Counselors will say yes or no to each candidate as their name is called in the row. So how this would look is, the clerk would then, you know, use the box to draw a number. Whoever's number is, whoever has assigned that number would, that would be the order in which they have the process, go through the process of the election. So that will ensue until, again, there there is a consensus of the body, seven votes to elect the next Ward One City Counselor. And if, you know, again, hopefully, God forbid, we won't have to go through this several times. But if we do, that that process would just be repeated until we do come to a consensus. So then I would, of course, say, you know, the members have elected candidate name insert there. And then I would just conclude with any, with just some some kind of general comments, thanking everyone for participating in the process. Certainly, as this is our first one that we've all experienced in terms of a vacancy and feeling that. So it's, this is a process, in essence, it's pretty straightforward. And I also just want to thank Attorney Moore specifically for, you know, we've had a conversation and I've run this through for this process with him as well. And it just seems to be very fair and, you know, very straight to the point, hopefully, in terms of how we would elect the next Ward One Counselor. So I appreciate the chair for giving me the opportunity to to lay that out, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Are there any questions? From anyone?
Can we, can we remove the screen?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I stopped sharing. Sorry. How do I stop sharing?
Okay, there we go.
Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Question on the process. So we we get through the part of the nominations, and we have, you know, three or four or five nominations, whatever. And the first, the first person, I know it's randomly selected, but the first person's name comes through the process. We're just voting for that person or not for that person?
Yes.
Yes. So in the scenario that the first person who comes through the process gets seven votes, we would actually never have a chance to vote for the other people.
Correct.
Is that, is that, is that something that you've heard of a process from other places or?
This is, no, this is actually directly from kind of like how Robert Ross Order kind of explains how it should take place in the absence of no process. So the first one that gets consensus would be the next person to fulfill the vacancy.
Okay, thank you. I'm just processing that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to everybody. Counselor Allen just beat me to the question. I was going to ask the same question. But I do have a quick clarifying question. When whoever gets appointed, the appointment won't be official until they get sworn in the next day?
That's, that's a good question, Counselor. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not the chair. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, to the council president, to the chair.
Yes, Counselor. I don't know, but any more is here, maybe. See, I offer a suggestion to that question.
Sure, yeah. I believe after the election takes place, there should be an oath of office taken. I think, you know, when the counselors, new counselors get elected, everybody sort of does that. So I think that would be the city clerk. I believe that would do it in this case. He should be present at that time as soon as the election completes. So theoretically, you could have it happen right then and there. I'd have to really check with Tashina to see if there's any other process that we would do. And we haven't had, geez, we haven't had like a city council election to fill a vacancy in quite some time. So I really don't know. I haven't had to do this process exactly before. So I would say you have the city clerk give the oath of office to whoever the successful elected candidate is, and then they're in and they're operating as at that time.
For sure, to be administered before the next meeting, for sure.
Yeah, at some point, right. I was going to say, that sounds like the right time to, the right way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Walsh.
Just make sure I'm unmuted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. President. So when you say ask for nominations, you're not asking us to throw out a name of someone that is not already on the list, correct?
Correct.
There would just be the people that have shown interest and sent in their resumes.
Yes, yes. And I believe Gladys might be on the call, but through the chair, I think it, because there was a vetting process that needed to take place, I think that would be.
Did everybody that applied get vetted?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And each one of those individuals would have to be nominated by a member of the city council?
Yes.
All right. Nice job of explaining it. Hopefully, it goes as smoothly as it was written.
Counselor Letterman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And let me say first, to express my gratitude to yourself, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the president for undertaking this task. You know, certainly, it is an extraordinarily important responsibility that the city council now has. And, you know, I know that we all, I think, share the same sentiment to commend anybody who's willing to step forward and serve the community on the city council. And as Attorney Moore mentioned, you know, it's a very unique situation that we have, the need to fill this seat. I know, I think, all of us hope that we're able to, in the future, see some legislation passed that will allow us to put a process in place that empowers the people of Ward One more directly. But as their representatives, it has fallen to us. I think the only question I have, Mr. Chairman, to the president through you, is relative to the final, final portion. I realize the reasoning for putting it in a place such that an individual's name is polled and then we vote yes or no on that nomination. Certainly, that is a way to do it. I suppose that the the point I would raise on that is the same point that I raised earlier in the, at the end, earlier this year, or the end of last year during our presidential caucus, which is that when, you know, you go to vote for somebody, you're not necessarily looking to vote no on somebody else so much as you are looking to voice your support for a candidate. And so, you know, my only, my only edit that I would suggest is to consider in that final portion, not having to take a name and nomination, but simply of the names that have been vetted and then nominated at that point, to simply state the name of the individual whom you are voting for. In other words, when I go to vote at the polling booth, I don't put an X next to the people I don't want and a check mark next to the people I do, because I think we all agree that everybody is certainly qualified, having been vetted, to represent them on this body. But I think the question is, why would we not simply just state our preferred candidate at that time and then see who has the majority of votes? Through the chair.
Chair, if I can answer that or speak to it.
Certainly, Counselor, President Williams.
Thank you, Counselor. And thank you, Counselor Letterman for the question. So I definitely put some thought into that. And my reasoning behind that was, God forbid, we get into a situation where it's kind of hard to draw consensus for a particular candidate. And we don't know how many candidates are going to get nominated. So that begs into question if we're just calling the names, if it's not allowing kind of for kind of the the individual separation out of each candidate for the opportunity to either vote them up or down. Now, one of the things that I thought about, that I did not include in this outline, but I certainly can ask Attorney Moore is, Attorney Moore, what, could it be appropriate to have a unanimous vote at the, after? So that all counselors can have the opportunity to say yes to that candidate?
I mean, I think, I'm not sure you can do that. I think what would happen is, as soon as you get to the seventh consensus vote, once you get to simple majority, that's the end. Like, that's, that is the final action. At that moment, that person has been elected. And, you know, you, you could do like a kind of procedural ceremonial type of thing, where the counselors all get to welcome the new counselor. You could do that, but I don't think, they wouldn't have any legal effect as to the actual vote of who voted what on on the election. So unfortunately.
I'm, I'm, I'm open to the idea, Counselor Letterman, for sure. You know, if there's around that, I just chose to separate it out just for clarity. And I know that, again, if, again, depending on the number of nominations, it can become a confusing, a more confusing process if we're saying the names instead of separating out each individual based on the drawing as well.
Through the chair, if I might. Sure. And let me start by also saying that, you know, I really appreciate the transparent transparency that the president has utilized in doing this. Whichever, whichever procedure we arrive at, I will certainly support. I just think it puts us in a, I suppose it puts us in a bit of an awkward position to say, be saying no, as opposed to be speaking in favor of the candidate that we, you know, so feel, you know, should be nominated at that time based on the process. So I would be curious what other, what other counselors think. Certainly, there could be a scenario where if we are simply stating the name, no one reaches consensus. At which point, you know, you would have to move to a second ballot. You know, you would have to, you'd have to go around again. So, you know, that is the process that, that I, that is the only tweak that I would personally suggest, but certainly open to counselors' thoughts on it. And again, Mr. President, really, my gratitude for the transparency and all the work.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was going to say exactly what Caterie, I mean, Counselor Walsh and Counselor Letterman said. The, I thank you for the process. I thank you for creating something that we didn't have. I know that it was hard work, but it makes me feel uncomfortable to even say who I'm voting for in front of other candidates, because it's just a really uncomfortable situation. Like, when we go to the ballot, no one really knows who we're voting for. And I think that if there's any way that we can do like a ballot style election, this is, I mean, this is a really, really uncomfortable situation, like, to say no to someone who who through the vetting process is qualified. I don't know how we would do it. We could write their name on a paper and put them in something or who we want, but it's just really uncomfortable to say no to someone, but to also say who we are voting for and kind of everybody is also uncomfortable. So I just wanted to say that.
Question would be inappropriate for Attorney Moore to chime in on that question of a secret ballot for the.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I just, I don't know that there's allowance for that within the statute. I don't, you know, I'd have to do some real research on that, because the way I looked at the statute, it's just plain language about, you know, the council, you know, appointing successor, you know, through an election. So that, that generally means you're voting not in a, in a, in a paper secret ballot, but in a voice vote. So I could look into it if, you know, the will of the council is, they want me to investigate, I certainly would be happy to do that. But that's the extent of what I understand on that issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can anybody explain what the, what the vetting process was? Like, was that? Tom, maybe you know what, did, is that something that HR did, or was that something that Election Commission did? What was the vetting process exactly?
I believe it was through the electoral office. I'd have to let Gladys kind of speak to that. I think she's on the, on the line as well.
Yes, I am Counselor Fenton. Just to respond to that, it's honestly very simple, because each of the candidates that submitted their letter of intent and resume to the city council was forwarded to my office. And the only qualifications that had to be met were their residency within the district, their ability to be a city council, which is being 18 years old and a registered voter in the city. And that is it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to speak briefly to what has been, we call by some of my colleagues already about the awkwardness of this vote. As you, Mr. Chair, have pointed out publicly in the past, this is a great burden that has fallen upon us. And a burden that I myself, along with all of you, my colleagues, are taking very seriously. This is why I do intend to bring forward legislation to fill this vacancy in the near future, along with Counselor Fenton. I'm going to be putting up a whiteboard, and I invite all my colleagues to please join us so that we can put this power, this great burden that has fallen upon us in the rightful hands of the board, who are the ones that have the ultimate say as to who should be serving in the city council. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I do believe that the process that appears to me, the process as outlined by Counselor, by Counselor President Williams, it's, yeah, it's a little bit awkwardness to all of us, but seems to be, it appears to me, the most fair way of doing this. Unfortunately, we only have one vote. And it is what it is at this point. So it's a great burden that we will take on humbly. And again, I'm going to be putting forward a vacancy legislation in the very near future, along with Counselor Fenton. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, let me see. I'm unmuted. Yes, to follow up with what Counselor Whitfield has said, and I don't know if any of you feel this way, but what makes me feel uncomfortable is actually appointing someone to the city council that hasn't been elected by the community. I realize that we have no, at this point in time, that is not an option to have an election. But that does make me very uncomfortable that the person has not been vetted by their own community. And in the process, during the election, the candidate's name is drawn, candidate A. Do we only say yes or no to that person? Or do, would we, if we wanted candidate B, do we say that when candidate A is being voted on?
Through the chair, if I may? Yeah, Counselor Walsh, I actually asked that question of Attorney Moore previously.
Okay.
Yeah, because I was wondering the same thing. And he, he, he did say that a counselor by right could pretty much vote yes on all candidates or no on all candidates. You know, it's, you, you, it doesn't, so your first vote for whoever candidate is not dependent on any other factor for like the next one. for like the next one, for example.
Yeah, like a counselor. So it's not to be confused with like when you're voting in a general election at the ballot, you have one, you know, you're, you're picking one thing. You're, you're really, you know, you're, you're gonna be presented with one or up to five votes theoretically, because there are five candidates. So you could have five nominations, you could have five separate votes take place. Theoretically, a counselor could say yes to each candidate and then have no consensus reach for each vote and have the voting process just continue. So you're not locked into the vote you take. If you wanted to, like, I hear the sensitivity that council has issue, and that is why a lot of communities have done what Counselor Doville was talking about and, and Counsel Fenton are, I think are gonna propose, which is to take it out of the legislative body's hands altogether and put it back to the election. That makes a lot of sense, and I totally understand where a lot of people are coming from. My kind of humble suggestion would be if you're in a position where if we're going through the voting and it's not the candidate you're supporting, you don't necessarily have to say no, you can do an abstention. You know, you can abstain from your vote. You don't have to vote down on somebody. They need seven yeses. They, that's all they need, yeses. If they don't get seven yeses, that's not, you're not elected. So if you don't support someone, you don't have to vote them down as if you're saying this person is not qualified. You can take a pass, and that's not gonna count as a yes, and it will serve the same purpose. That would be my recommendation, you know, respectfully.
I like, I like that suggestion. So how's this first scenario? Nobody gets seven votes?
Through, through the chair, if I may, again, if, if not, then at some point, we would have to adjourn the meeting and make, you know, certainly take it up again at a, at a following meeting.
I believe it just would keep like Counselor Letterman like alluded to this, it just keeps going until we get consensus. So the body could suspend the proceeding and then reconvene at another time, but you would have to take up the business at a certain point to conclude that election. And, you know, it would be, it would be the forces of kind of pressure working there where sooner or later, like, we'd have to get to seven yes. So it, it might take a while, it might not, you know, but that is a risk.
Thank you.
Gladys, did you have, you did have your hand up? Or did, was it something that you wanted to add?
Well, I just wanted to thank Counselor Davila and Counselor Fenton for actually taking the opportunity to spearhead a change in this. I knew eventually it was going to come to this crossroads, and I think I would say back when Counselor Keith Wright stepped down, it's something I spoke to Counselor Walsh about, because that was an issue then, where the body didn't have to elect someone or didn't have to appoint someone, but we were going to, you know, come to this scenario at some point. And the similar situation, the city council voting on this and taking this up will also affect the school committee because they use a similar method to fill a vacancy. So if there is a vacancy on that side, we're going to have to, we're gonna come to this again at some point. So I just wanted to thank both counselors and hopefully to be invited in any meetings that you have making or having it filled by a special election.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I first want to commend the Council President Marcus Williams for addressing this issue. This is something that I do believe that was necessary because as far as ward representation, I believe that people, like my colleague Counselor Walsh had said that it's important that we put an elected official there. Unfortunately, when I was elected, Henry Twigs, the great Henry Twigs had passed. So we had an elected official ready to take the seat. And the standing president at the time said that we didn't need a ward four counselor. So I'm glad that Marcus stepped up, Council President stepped up, and we're addressing it. Because I believe ward, the ward representation is very important. I believe this, this is something that we're gonna have to address because things are changing in the future. So I believe that we have to have legislation that will address these issues. Because when I got elected, unfortunately, Ward Four did not have a ward counselor based on the president's at the time decision. So I commend you, President Williams, for taking the fight and addressing these issues. Hopefully, we can get it right. Thank you.
As a matter of procedure, I've seen that Counselor Hurst has his hand up, he, as well as Counselor Allen and Letterman. Counselor Hurst has not spoken, so I'm going to ask that we allow him to speak next. So Counselor Hurst.
I defer, Mr. Chair. I defer, Mr. Chair, and you can allow the other two. I'll go in order. No big deal.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your courtesy. Allen, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I'm just trying to recall, we had a, and it might be Counselor Fenton filed this. We had a proposal to replace award counselor, which did in fact have an election part of it, but it depended on how far in advance the opening came from when the next election would be. And I thought it was seven months, but is that the Counselor Fenton, is that the thing we filed, but the legislature never acted on it?
Yeah, through, through the chair, if that's all right with you, Mr. Edwards. We, we passed it twice, Tim, and both times it died in the general court. So we're gonna, we're gonna revive that, and at the appropriate time after we fill this position, we can revisit that with Gladys and Tom and Victor and everybody else's help.
And would that, to, to the chair, would that would that have been an effect in this situation where there wasn't, it was a whole new election, so anybody could run? It wasn't dependent on the, the results of the previous election?
Correct. So currently, if Counselor Gomez had an opponent in the last race that was certified to be on the ballot, that person would now be getting sworn in to succeed to his seat now. Because he did not have an opponent, the council has to fill the position by a voter majority of the counselors. That, those, both of those situations are what I was trying to avoid back when we tried to do this about five or six years ago, the most recent time. And to answer your question, had that been adopted by the general court, then we would be having a special election to fill this seat. And if we, if we felt that the special election was a bad idea, similar to what's going on in Holyoke right now, we could have sought a special order from the Mass General Court waiving that requirement and allowing us to leave the seat vacant for a period of time.
Can I ask one more question, Mr. Chair?
Continue, please.
Thank you. Could we have chosen to do that and appeal to somebody to allow us to have a special election?
No. Not now.
Because that didn't pass.
Right.
Well, I simply, I don't wanna, I know Counselor Hurst has a question, and I don't wanna end the debate, I guess. I was just going to ask what our kind of next steps are. I know the President mentioned he'll entertain a motion, you know, to place this procedure in order at the meeting, but I guess, are we gonna take any sort of, well, only the members of the committee would even be able to take a procedural vote here. So I guess my question was just what's next, but I, I know there may be more debate, so.
I, I will make sure that your question gets answered. But may, for, for the purpose of how, getting this done efficiently, Counselor Hurst, please.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things. One, thank you, Mr. President, for all of your work that you put into this process. It actually, the way in which you interpreted Robert's rules, it sounds pretty similar to, to my interpretation of Robert's rules for the presidency. So, so, so we're clearly on the same page when it comes to that. Couple of things, I too agree with Counselor Walsh in that I would love to see the residents of Ward One actually elect their, that, that, the counselor to fill this position. Unfortunately, that may not be the case, which is one of the reasons why I feel like we also have an obligation to not give this particular individual an advantage. And while I know, Mr. President, in our conversations, you said that the person who was going to fill this seat, we can't put any requirements that they not run. But I think, you know, as a body, we need to take into consideration those individuals who are going to use this platform as an opportunity if we appoint them to give themselves an advantage come November. And certainly, we all know that we have the pulpit as representatives of the city council. And then the last thing I'll say is that in terms of, you know, a, a, a secret ballot, while I appreciate that this is a tough decision, I think anything that we do should be transparent and that we should do it, we, we should do it via, you know, yes, vote folks up or vote folks down. And, and that everybody should be able to see exactly who we're voting for. And I think merely if you, if you vote just to put an individual's name up, then, you know, I think in essence, you're still voting no to the other candidates who have been nominated. So I'm not a hundred percent sure, you know, what the difference. I'm not a hundred percent sure whether just putting a name up of the individual that has been nominated allows folks to get around the impression that you are not voting no to the other candidates. You still, by voting that particular, by putting that name up or saying that particular name, you're in essence saying no to the other four names. So I'm not a hundred percent sure it matters, but certainly like the process as is, Mr. President.
Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to respond to what Counselor Hurst said, I think that we should be transparent too. But when we go to the ballot, nobody knows who we're voting for. And I think that it, it should be a similar process because no one knows we're saying no to, because in essence, when we go to the ballot, we're saying no to people too. And so I don't think that, that's, I think, as you and Counselor Walsh and most people that spoke has said, the people should be voting for the candidate in the ward. So I'm really, really hoping that whatever Counselor Fenton and Counselor Davila is putting forward, it will make sense and it will go through and something that I can get behind and support. But I still would like Attorney Moore to look into seeing if we could do a ballot process because I just don't think that, that that's a fair process for us. And it's not that we're not being transparent, but we should not have to, you know, put ourselves out there either by saying, in essence, whether we abstain or not, we're saying no to somebody. And that, that's it.
Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't disagree that the vote should be public, but, but let's be clear about what we're actually gonna be asked to do at the meeting. We're gonna be asked to adopt a procedure that will be put forward by a counselor because Robert's Rules of Order and our rules are silent on the process. So we are designing the process right now. And so I think that's the essence of my suggestion and would repeat my question simply, just where do we go from here? Will we be making any edits to this committee, or will we be simply, you know, proceeding to the floor vote, Mr. Chairman?
Well, at this point, I'm gonna defer to the Council President for his discretion on this issue. We had, it's a legitimate question. The, this meeting establishes quorum by the presidents, by his participation. As the seat that we're trying to fill is vacant as a member of this committee as well, and the other appointee to the committee is not present. So we establish quorum to the president being a participant. And as such, I'm going to defer to him as to how a motion or whether, whether he would consider a motion suggested by an attendee to be made by myself or him for consideration for a vote because we do send this back to the Committee of the Whole for the vote as to the rules that are being proposed. So President Williams.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair and Counselor Letterman. At first, you know, given the comments that Attorney Moore made in regards to allowing for abstention, for example, or, you know, in, in the place of a no vote or, you know, another word that maybe not was at this time. I, hopefully, that I thought that might be getting to the point, you know, getting at the point that you were expressing before. If you are, I, I am comfortable, I, I am comfortable moving with what I have in this template as is. I will say for the record, I'm not comfortable with a, a secret ballot. Just do believe that this should be a public transparent process, also considering that this is the first time that we've had to undergo something of this nature. I think that all should be kind of left out for folks to see. And, you know, I, i- if it, if it makes sense to even give a disclaimer to, to folks in the public or the candidates that a no vote doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, we, we, we don't feel you should be on the council or you're not qualified. Then I can certainly do that as well, just to kind of alleviate any concerns around that. But I am comfortable moving along as is with the template, Counsel Letterman. If you can be agreeable, you know, also to that, to that point around voting the names versus, you know, voting up or down.
Your question.
So, Mr. Chair, to clarify, the move is that there'd be no vote taken today, there'd be a motion on the day of to accept this procedure as proposed.
There, oh, I'm sorry. I, I was just gonna say through the chair, Counselor, I, I think it might be appropriate for, since a quorum is established to make the recommendation to the full body that this is the procedure that was voted on. And, and, and maybe leave it at that.
That's at the, that's the prerogative of your, your committee, Mr. President. Like I said, I'll, I'll, I'll go with whichever process the council supports. I just say, I guess in closing, I, I really don't support this methodology of raising individual candidates and voting up or down when the council is in a position to make appointments. And, and I, I think that in, in some ways, as it did with the council presidency previously, and this is not some proxy debate about the council presidency, but there are only limited scenarios where we actually nominate and appoint people. I think it breaks from self precedent. However, in, in light of the fact, Mr. President, of, of all your hard work and, and the transparent way in which you have put it forward, I will certainly respect the vote of the committee. And again, very much appreciative to you and the chairman for your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just gonna make a, a quick comment, or this is something that definitely, maybe if you choose to do so, a little time to follow up in, in the General Government Committee. It seems to me that we need to enshrine some sort of a process within the rules and orders of the city council for future use in, in this kind of equations. I don't know, just in the, in the event that not the we need to look a little closer at the, at the, at the rules and sort of saying, I know that we're gonna be putting forward a vacancy. But I wonder how long that's gonna take, but that's, that's food for thought for the meeting, Mr. President. Just, just a random thought, basically, but a yield.
Okay, I'm gonna just, just traditionally, what normally happens when we send things to committee, including the general government, the itself may make a recommendation of support for an item. But when it comes back to committee of the whole, that is where motions and, and Attorney Moore can chime in as whether I'm correct on this. I believe that motions can be made on the floor once this comes back, regardless of the recommendation of the committee. Is that correct, Attorney Moore?
Yeah, I believe that's my understanding as well.
Okay, um, so that everybody understands that today, we, uh, the only two people who have the authority to make a vote on these conditions is myself and Counselor Williams as establishments of the quorum. But if any counselor has motion, I believe legally he can bring it back to the Committee of the Whole, which would be next week's meeting, which where before this process starts, there is when we would have to vote these procedures in place. Is that correct, uh, Mr. President or Mr. Attorney Moore?
Yes, that's how I interpret it, yes.
Yeah, again, same understanding.
Okay, then, that being said, uh, are there any other questions or cons, be, I, that I should entertain before?
Oh, Counselor Edwards, I, you blanked out. I don't think we could hear you.
Okay, um, didn't touch anything, but can it, I hope, can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I make, uh, as, um, I put forth a motion, um, to be seconded and, uh, as a recommendation that the procedures that were crafted and drafted, uh, with the assistance of Attorney Moore by the president be put forth and I, uh, in its entirety as it is. And do I hear a second?
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. The motion carries. And, um, I thank everybody for your time. This is going to be and has been a difficult process. I know that I've already started to hear from supporters of some of the candidates already. Um, this process should not be taken, uh, as a, as a slight to any of the people who are willing to serve. We and those colleagues that have been duly elected know how difficult it is to make decisions. Uh, and unfortunately, we do not have the sanctity of the voting booth to allow us to be able to do this privately. This does need to be transparent. Um, so I, I first want to thank, um, my president, uh, Counselor Williams for, in putting the effort to put this forward. Um, Tom Moore, Attorney Moore, uh, once again, you died doing this, uh, to Gladys and her staff, appreciate the work that she's done. And to you, all of you as my colleagues, I know this is something we all take seriously. Um, you're, we're all kind of going back and forth and trying to figure out what the best process is. None of us want to disrespect any of the candidates. We certainly do not disrespect the residents of Ward One. Um, and we, we're doing the best we can and we hope that at the end of this process, that everybody will be civil, that they will be respectful of the process and recognize this was not done personally. Uh, it was just a formula that was left for us or the lack of a formula left for us to, to, to get to an, a, a end or a means to fill the vacancy. So, uh, if there are no other questions or comments, I'd like to entertain a motion from the president, um, to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
I, that motion and this meeting now is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Uh, God bless.
Thank you.